Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May the 7th, to order roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McKesker?
Yes.
Schoblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. Everybody stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Meeting. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda as submitted.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
A motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us to item five on the agenda this evening, the public input. Citizens may speak to items not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak under the public input tonight? If not, we'll move on. Moves us to item six, which are public hearings. The first public hearing is Resolution 2018, Adopting Assessments for the East Side One Improvement Project. And Mr. Reeves?
Yep. This is, you know, basically kind of the last step in the assessment process for the East Side One project. This will officially adopt the assessments, and we have the assessment rule attached. You can see that they're the same as from, we had the meeting last time and reviewed them with the bids. So we'll, approving of this will let us move forward with the assessments. We'll, we'll send final assessment notifications to all the, all the property owners with the information on how to prepay assessments, all those sort of things. And then, at the end of the year, whoever hasn't prepaid will certify to the county and we'll be done with that part of the project.
At this time, then, is there any discussion up here from the council? If not, then we'll open up the public hearing. At this time, if anybody wishes to address the council on the East Side One project Seeing as there is no one that wishes to address the council, under the Resolution 2018, Adopting Assessments for the East Side One project, the Chair will go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there's any other discussion. If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the Resolution 2018, Adopting the Assessments for the East Side One Improvement Project.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Merrell, second by Bill. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That moves us on to item B, 6B, which is Resolution 2019. That will be the certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Lanell?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight you have before you the most recent list of unpaid utility charges that we would like to have approved for certification to Goodhue County for collection on next year's taxes.
Okay. It seemed to be going down a little bit, I think.
There are a couple on there that are a little bit larger. One of them is a commercial account, and we'll be following that procedure on that one.
Any further discussion? Okay. This time, we will open up the public hearing for the Resolution 2019, Certifying Unpaid Utility Charges. Are there any residents on these parcels that wish to address the council on the public Seeing as there are none, we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019, Certifying the Unpaid Utility Charges to Be Collected With Taxes. Alls in favor?
Aye.
And passes. That moves us on to the consent agenda. Items of this area, the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending May 2nd, 2013. Item B is the meeting minutes for the April 16th, 2013 city council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2016, authorizing acceptance of a monetary donation for the fire department. Item D, Resolution 2017, authorizing acceptance of a grant from Wisconsin Industrial Sand Company for the fire department. Item E, reading, second reading and adoption of ordinance 330 and summary of publication, amending section 152.648 of the Cannon Falls zoning ordinance referencing the B2 Highway Business District. Item F, application for payment number nine for the library construction. Item G, payment, application for payment number 10 for the library construction project. Item H is a burn permit, and item I is a higher, a paramedic applicant for the ambulance service. Are there any items anyone wishes to bring down? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll move.
I will second that.
A motion by Merrell, and a second by Bill. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that will move us on to council business, the south of the school utility extension project. Aaron?
So, as the council knows from the packet, this has changed a lot since the last time we talked about it, last council meeting. There's, there's kind of two main areas of change, and we'll maybe address them each a little separately, and then we'll get to the end, and we'll talk about what the Public Works Commission is recommending as far as a way to get this resolved and get this done with. The first issue is more of a financial issue. The initial assessment role, in the assessments that we discussed with this project, had the vacant land to the east being assessed for seven lots that would be served off the service lines for the project. The owner of that parcel came in to, to talk with staff, and he brought in the original plat for that project, an original development plan, and he says he intends to follow that plan. If that's the case, and he follows that plan, we can't assess him for those seven lots because the utility lines that he'll be using to serve them will be in a different location in, in the project when it happens. So if that's the case, we really kind of have two options with it. One is then you have to assess the service line costs fully to the 10 properties, these, these homes. We would still assess the vacant lot, the crossing cost of about $41,000, but the actual splitting of the service lines, since he wouldn't having a benefit from them, would have to be split among the 10 homes. And if that's the case, if you split those among the 10 homes, the assessments would go up from $18,000 to roughly $32,000 per house. The other option with that is that potentially, the developer of that land could tap into those lines in the future. There's no, there's nothing that we can guarantee that says he won't, or a future owner won't come back in the future and say, "No, I want to use those lines now." So what we can do is also hold that amount for roughly those seven lots. City would carry that cost, and in the future, if the developer had a change in plans and decided to tap into it, we could assess them at that time. If he didn't, we would have to eat that cost, roughly 140 some thousand. But there's some other issues with that, too, and we'll get to that maybe in a little while at the end, when we talk about what Public Works Commission discussed today as some options, as far as trying to get this kind of cleaned up and resolved. The other part of this that has changed since last meeting is just the checking on, let's say, the condition of the septic systems and also on the wells. We received, we did testing on the, on the wells. We had one that came back with the fecal chloroform, or whatever you call it, as far as testing positive. Now, we can't verify that it's not something in their line versus the well, so we've let the homeowner know about it, and they're going to do further testing to verify, you know, where that contamination's coming from. We also tested for nitrates, and we found three wells that have elevated nitrate levels, but they're still under what would be considered, I guess, a dangerous level. But we've also been in contact with Goodhue County, and we've got representatives from the county here today, and I'm actually going to kind of let them explain some things as far as the septics themselves, you know, conformance, what the, if they, if they're estimated to still be within their useful life, those sort of things. Because from what I understand of the situation, there's probably eight of the 10 are not within their useful lives anymore, and all of them are basically non-conforming. But if that's okay, Jason, can you kind of just run through your map that you put together and try to explain a little bit what we're talking about?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jason Peterson from the Goodhue County Environmental Health Department. We do wells, septics, complaints, among many different things.
Jason, could you put a copy of that map for the public to be able to see it? Just put it on the camera there. Thank you.
So then, when the city administrator contacted me and asked what information we had, I went through the files. It's an older subdivision than a lot of our zoning ordinances and building ordinances, but we did have some information. And in the map itself, as you can see in the legend, the larger blue circles are the setbacks from wells. The smaller blue circle, or the green circle, is a setback from a newer well. We had two wells in the subdivision that we had records of. And since those had more than 50 feet of casing, they have a reduced setback from an unknown well, or in some of these cases, wells with shallow casing to them. The red is the structure setback. You have to maintain 20 feet from a structure with a soil absorption drain field area. And then 10 feet, the yellow lines are buffers around the property lines. We were just trying to get an idea of what available areas some of these smaller lots had, as far as get an idea where the septic was and what kind of replacement areas they'd have, or additional expense of having to excavate out the existing, if it were for them to come to replace it all. And to see what the age of the septics were that we had on record. The newer house that was built out in 86, 87, the McNamara property, that actually's on its second system. I believe the first system was an old gravelless SB2 system that didn't work well in some of the sands and that, and failed relatively quickly, and then was replaced again in 1996. The Gibson property just to the north of him, that one was replaced in 1999, and it did have some problems. Not with the current owner, it was the previous owner that had the system installed, and there was apparently some confusion between the homeowner and the installer as to how deep that casing went. And he installed the system in a 50-foot setback instead of the 100-foot he should have followed. And in trying to resolve that with the homeowner, they originally took out a well permit to replace the well and seal the old one. And then, and they had discussions with the city at the time, and their plan was to hook onto the city water. So at that point, that would have resolved the issue for us, or at least the violation of the septic being too close. And as I understand it now, he never did hook up. So we'll have to take a look at that at some point. We do have two compliance inspections that were done by private inspectors themselves in the northeast corner. That one was identified as a cesspool. And then, the center lot, the Anderson lot down on the south side, had, the inspector had indicated that there was a drywell still hooked into the system that had been replaced at some point. At least prior to our records, or at some point in time, it had to be replaced. Oh, I'm sorry. And that's kind of the extent of the records. We did look at an old plan for, I believe, 12 years ago, they were going to put city sewer and water out there. And there was a plan done at that time that did a fairly extensive survey of this subdivision and identified the locations of the wells, septics. And we tried to put those on the map as close as we could to the areas that we thought that they would be in, or looking at the properties, given the topography of them, where they would probably be located. And really, that's kind of all the information we have in there. We have some building permits for additions and swimming pools that go back into the early 70s. So most of the houses, wells, and septics are going to predate that period anyway. So they're looking at 40-plus years now on some of it. And that's what we know from our files.
And as, as far as you know with the ages of the ones you do know, and then potentially the other ones, I mean, is it the, is there any opinion as far as, are they functioning correctly? What are the, you know, potential issues with them? You know, what our concern is, is that from when we talked, it sounds like there's 10 feet of sand or so, and then bedrock. So it's tough to have functioning septics out there, and there could be some issues with the septics if they're not working correctly, and where that, where that's going now, into the bedrock, into potential wells, aquifer, anything like that?
Well, when the two newer systems went in, they did soil borings. And they did show mottled soil, usually due to seasonally high groundwater, down at four and a half, five feet. So they had a restricting layer that they had to try to keep the soil absorption system three feet above it. They had design restrictions on them. And then, when we looked into the one that installed the system too close to the well, that well ended up with only nine feet of casing in it. And in the old style of drilling, they just cased the first bedrock. And then the well log on the other end, that one, I believe, showed 14 feet to bedrock. So give or take a few feet. It's 10 feet to rock with very poor soil on top of that, just a few feet under the surface of the ground. Probably not real conducive to some of these older systems, especially not drywell cesspools that are probably down deeper than that restricting layer.
So if it were today, would anybody be able to put septics in on these lots?
They have, most of them have very restricted areas that they could use. And then it would depend on the size of the house, the number of bedrooms, and assuming that a whole lot of cutting or filling wasn't done in that subdivision when they created some of the driveways, roads, and buildings. It's hard to say as a generalization. Some of them have some open areas left to use, and some of them are pretty restricted.
Anybody on the council, any questions for Jeff?
Would the county allow septic systems to be put in there?
Since they're existing lots of record, and it would be a replacement, even holding tanks would be allowed. And tanks only have a 50-foot setback from the well, so that would be, that would open up a great deal more area. But that would be an option if the city would allow septics to go in, since I believe your ordinance has very restrictive requirements as to when a lot in the city can obtain a
Any other questions? Does any of the homeowners have any questions for Jeff on any of this?
Jason.
Oh, Jason, I mean.
Thanks, Jason. So, so basically, I mean, what we're looking at is, from, from the way I understand it, and Jason, you can correct me again if it's not right, but it looks like there's two that for sure should be hooked up probably now, two more that are with their age. It would not make much sense to not hook them up when we did the others. We've got the two newer ones that we know about, but then after that, we have four with really not a whole lot of information on? Is that kind of where it stands?
Fair summary.
Yeah. So, you know, so we're looking at four that probably for sure should be done now, four more that, do you know why we don't information? Are they older than the four that we know, or the six that we know about? Is that?
There's just a total lack of information on it. Some of the lots have no information.
Yep.
Building permit, nothing.
Yep. So we've kind of got an unknown with, with four of the lots then about where it's at. But we talked about it in Public Works today, and the issues obviously we discussed is that some of these need to be hooked up, if not all of them, just because we don't know a lot about them. We do know that, for the most part, they're all basically non-conforming right now with, with what would be allowed, if we would allow septics in there. Some would not even be able to put in septics. Some might be able to, some might be able to do a holding tank, but is that really a long-term option? As we know, it has to be pumped out very regularly. It just seems like there's, there's a lot of questions and issues with this, and it's been kind of dragging on for a while. So Public Works Commission discussed that aspect, and they also discussed the price. How realistic is it to say that we were going to, if we assessed the full cost, that each of these homes could afford to pay $32,000 plus sack and whack charges? Plus the cost to connect up the stubs to their home, when you're talking $40-plus-thousand? Clearly, that, that doesn't seem to be a realistic thing for the city to do. So what we did discuss was that, one, it's felt that we should, if we're going to put the project in and do the infrastructure, everybody should hook up right away. Get, get everything in place, get everybody hooked up, get these septics and wells off the syst, off the homes, and have them hooked up to city utilities. But to do that, we also understand that there's, obviously, there's history with this development. There's been some issues and things like that. So what the Public Works Commission is recommending is that we charge a flat assessment of $15,000. That covers the, the cost to extend the lines, the cost to extend the mains under the road, and the sack and whack charges. Everything included in the $15,000 flat rate. We would charge them the same assessment terms as what we're charging the other east and west side projects, the, the 15 years at, at the 5% interest. And then, the only really other charges that the homeowners are going to have are dealing with connecting from the stubs that we install to their homes. And we know that that could be, depending on the home, it could be anything from a real short line they'd have to run to something that might be more, more elaborate, more, more requirement to, to connect up. So we'd also like to offer that if a homeowner has an expense as far as connecting from their home to our stub, that if they'd like, we'd also be willing to add that cost onto the assessment as well, to help with, I guess, financing the, the final hookup of everything. So that's what the Public Works Commission is recommending. Obviously, we haven't had that conversation with the homeowners yet, because last meeting, things were much different. But, but the, the general thought is, you know, $15,000 flat rate seems a good compromise. The city will pick up the additional cost, will carry that cost. Either we'll pay it, or if for some reason the vacant development to the east decides to tap into any of these lines, we'll assess them their share of that, and we would get, you know, a good chunk of that, that money back through that assessment. If we were to do that, what we've, what we would propose to do is add the cost for this project onto the East Side One bond. We still have time to do that. And if we did that, and that carrying cost that we're talking about, which is roughly 100, say, $50,000 that the city would be picking up with the cost to do these connections, it would add about $5,500 to our annual debt levy for that bond. So nothing extravagant, nothing, you know, that's, you know, that, that would be difficult for us to pick up and carry. So it, it seemed like a good compromise to Public Works. You know, and obviously, we haven't had the, the chance to, to throw it by the homeowners yet, which is, you know, what we're doing tonight. But it seems like $15,000 flat cost, no other fees involved, and then if the homeowner has expenses that they can't cover as far as the actual connection from their home to the stub, we'd also be willing to add that amount to the assessment, you know, as well. So that's the recommendation from the Public Works Commission.
I think it's good.
Any discussion up here on the council before we open it up to the homeowners? Or do you want to hear from the homeowners first?
Do you have some, Morris?
No, I just think it's, it's a lot better than it was last time.
We, we had a really good discussion about this today. I see the young family out here. You were in our discussion. We discussed the fact that you probably bought your home at the peak period of the housing bubble. We discussed, a lot of people have taken things backwards on their houses now. You have this kind of expense to the house. We also know that our school needs kids, and we want families in Cannon Falls. All this was discussed at the meeting today. How can we make this better and make it work? We also discussed if, if we let it go for 10 years and gave you 10 years to hook up, we've got kind of a little bit of a budget problem with our water and sewer bills, where we have to raise that every year 6%, 7%. We're trying to get all the hookups and the things we can to keep that down. So that entered into our thinking. We also talked about the fact that if we got the assessments down low, it was talked to try to get it down to like $10,000. The numbers actually came out at $20,000, and we eventually arrived at 15 was the best we could work with. And we also talked about families in your situation. How are they supposed to refinance their home and, and go do this? So we all agreed that we should make some kind of package offer. If you want to go get different bids from local contractors on what your hookup is, you bring that bid into city, to Aaron when you're done, it'll all be put into a package. Everything would be financed through the, the taxes. We also talked about, whatever we did, we had to try to keep that below $150 a month. And maybe that's too much, too, but somehow, we got to make all this work. So the budget committee, the Public Works Committee, put a lot of time into this. We realized that some ways you, people out there were victims because of the development situation. So we tried to do what we could to keep families in town, keep in our schools. Yet somehow, we still got to pay for all this, and it gets to be very expensive. So we had a very good discussion, and I hope somehow this helps. I realize it's not an easy thing, but hopefully, somehow this helps. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to echo a lot of what Leroy said. As we discussed it, we got it down, you know, the, the $15,000 plus, if you feel you can't afford to hook up from the, into the house, you could also add that to your assessments. It's certainly going to save you guys a fair amount of money, about $3,000 some, based on the previous estimates, plus, you know, the no whack and sack, which is another $8,400. So we hope, we hope this would work out for you guys, that it looks like we can save about $11,000 for most of you, so.
If nobody else has anything, I'll open it up to the homeowners to address the council. And if you would, sign in for us there, so we know who all was here.
Oh, sure. I've done this before. Jim Smith, bottom right corner. My question is, on my house, how far are you guys bringing up the line? Because that makes a difference on how much I'm going to have to pay to hook up. If you bring it to the first map I saw, which is right about here, then I got to go, you know, the rest of the way, my septic's right over here, coming out of the house, and then my well is on the way back. So, you know, my question is, is if you're only going to bring it up to the line between me and penis, that doesn't really do me any good where I'm sitting.
There has to be a fire hydrant at the end there, so it will come all the way down to the end.
All the way to the end.
I can explain that. Yeah, we did discuss that today.
Greg could explain that better.
All right. If the project moves ahead, we'd have an open house to, to get these issues, to make sure we're putting the stubs in the best spot that fits. But I think in your case, at a minimum, we'd probably go to the middle of your lot, so just south of your driveway.
Yep.
So you get the, the septic to the north, and then probably run around the south side of your house with the water.
Okay. I didn't see that on any maps, so.
Well, the, the earlier ones was more of a graphic representation. We didn't have it down to the exact foot. Here's where we're going to stop, because the next step would be, like, you'd have this discussion with the 10 of you folks to make sure our stubs are as best spot we can.
Right.
So you can, you know, try to make your, your connection as economical as it can be.
Okay. Well, that answers my question on that. I want to thank you for what you've considered with this Public Works proposal. I just want to remind you that when we were annexed because of this addition, we were granted also a, a pretty decent rate at being hooked up to city water and sewer then, and that fell through and it left us high and dry. I, I don't feel, as long as all my stuff's working, that it, that it, you know, it's fair that I have to be forced to go to city water and sewer at this time. That's just my personal opinion. But, you know, it is what it is. Granted, my taxes went up $1,500 a year when I became a City of Cannon Falls resident, and my services didn't. Okay? I, I still got my road plowed, but I got that plowed by the county. The one time I called the sheriff's department to ask for a Cannon cop, they said a sheriff. You know, so I had to get that straightened out. But, you know, other than that, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim.
You know, I think one of the things, too, is that, what we're trying to stress is that, well, the toilet may flush, and it seems like the system's working. At this point, we're having a hard time with a number of, guaranteeing that it's actually still functioning the proper way once it leaves the home and enters a septic. We just, from the age of the systems and things like that, the, the likelihood that, that a number of them are not functioning the way they should is really quite possible. We know for sure two, probably four, and then we have really limited information on four others. And, you know, considering the age and things, it's quite likely that there would be issues. But the hard part is, too, is to find that out. I mean, Jason, do we have to dig in and actually get in the ground to check the systems? Or, I mean, how do you verify some of that sort of stuff?
Well, in, in the case of certifying a system as being in compliance with the rules, it doesn't have rules, it doesn't have to meet the current rules. It just has to meet a certain set of criteria, meaning a separation from a limiting layer, not be surfacing, backing up into a dwelling. Um, and they do have a procedure for doing compliance inspections. Two of the properties have already had compliance inspections. And there is a difference between a system just simply disposing of the water and actually treating it or not creating a problem with the groundwater. And the only way to really determine that is to have a compliance inspection done and have each site looked at, which would include locating the exact area of the system, doing soil borings, and looking at the soil and determining the depth of the system was installed. So it is possible. It's just going to take field work to do it, and a contractor that's licensed by the state that can do it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any other homeowners wishing to address the council?
Tim Anderson. And... This is my property right here. I'm just wondering if, uh, the plan you have for the water is gonna be the most efficient. Uh, with the old plan, if the water main came in here, went through here, so I just hooked up right there. It was about sixty feet for me to hook up. Now your plan is going around the front here and coming back here. It's gonna be two hundred and sixty feet for me. I got an estimate today of seventy-four hundred dollars per hookup. And it's gonna be a dead end all the way from here, all the way back here. I'm kinda concerned about if the water's gonna get stagnant, or if we're gonna get a lot of sediment in our, so we have to get a water, special water filter or something. Uh, I'm not a hydrologist, so I don't know. I don't know about that stuff.
Greg.
You're right. The original plan had the lines going in the backyards, if you will. And that is an option we could explore, but it would require easements from the folks' yards we'd be going through, because it would be city mains, and the, that public works would need access to maintain those mains. And in your case, it probably would be more efficient, because we'd be closer to your system. Is that the best route for all of them? That's probably a discussion we'd have in, in an open house, but we'd need an easement to get back there. And at the end of the day, we'd like to make this as easy for everyone, not the city and the residents as possible. So we're not ruling that out. But we looked at, the options we presented this year looked at not getting an easement. Worst case, we just do it in the streets, and right away we have. The, the water main coming down both streets to the south would have a hydrant at the end. The public works would flush twice a year, like all the other hydrants in town. Wouldn't anticipate any water issues. We have several folks on dead ends in town, and as long as those dead ends are maintained and flushed, we don't have many water issues, if any, on water quality. And the forty-nine acre development or parcel around you would connect to one or probably both of those mains when development came, so they would not be dead ends forever. It's likely that they would get connected, extended to the south in the future.
You think?
That, that's, that would be our best guess at this point. But as far as the, a, a backyard line, you know, we, like I said, we'd need easements from you and your three neighbors to the north and east of you to, to look at that option. And that's something we definitely would look at as, as we develop the plans. I was looking at, if I didn't have the easements working, I put the pipes and still get to everyone's lot.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I have is about the cemetery. I mean, do they get assessed, or do they get a free ride, or, I mean, they're, they're getting the benefit, potential benefit. They could, uh, sell part of their cemetery and build a house on it? I don't know. That's, that's a question.
We don't assess them just for the fact that we don't look at them as future development areas. Um, you know, I guess anything's possible. Um, but generally speaking, if a cemetery's involved in a project, we would assess them if, say, they were gonna tap onto the water line to use it, or something like that. But we don't look at them as potential lots. Um, it's, it's just highly unusual to, to have a cemetery relocate for housing, especially in our area. Um, so we don't, no. We don't look at that and assess them.
That's a special circumstance for them, then.
Right. We're, we're not assuming that anybody's gonna wanna do that.
Well, you never know.
You don't. You don't. And that's true.
They've got land in the back there that they, you know, if they got onto hard times, they could sell it and build a.
It's, it's possible that that could happen, um, yes. But we, we, we usually assume not with cemeteries. We, because we never, we, well, I've never seen that. But it doesn't mean it couldn't. But yeah, we, we don't generally do that with the cemeteries, no. We don't have assumptions there.
Okay. Then, uh, that's the other thing I, I guess I'd like to know is, if you're, you're proposing an agreement that we have, all have to sign, yeah, what's the procedure if we all sign it? And then what's the procedure if we don't all sign it?
Yep.
I don't, I don't need to be up here for that.
No, yeah, that's fine. There are individual assessment agreements that we'd have with each of the property owners. Um, and if for some reason, um, there were property owners that did not sign the agreement, um, what would happen is, is that, for the most part, the project, if the council approves and thinks it's time for everybody to get hooked up, and they want to move this forward, project still moves forward. Um, according to code, once utilities are in and available, if you don't hook up within one year, you're in violation. So at that point in time, then we'd have to start district court proceedings to force the connection. Um, and so at that point in time, once we go through district court and we force the connection, um, then that, those fees would have to be paid. So that fifteen thousand dollar amount would have to be paid at that time then. Um, it's obviously not something we want to do, but that would be the procedure, and, and that's, um, uh, we had to start down that road with some of the Cedar Hills residents until we could get assessment agreements in place. Um, but, uh, that would be what we would follow. So let's say we have eight out of the ten sign, the two that did not. Once utilities are in and available, they have one year to connect. If, for whatever reason, they do not connect, we begin proceedings in court, and, and then eventually they'll have to connect. And at that time, they will have to pay that fifteen thousand dollars then.
So it wouldn't slow the project down. The project would go ahead no matter what?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, technically, if the council wants to go forward with it in all ten, nobody wants to sign. We'd have to do that with all ten, um, you know, in a year. Um, but, you know, again, that obviously raises the cost for the homeowner. If, if that's the case, they have to pay attorney fees, and often have to pay our attorney fees too at the end. Um, and at that point in time, the assessment agreement does not have to be an option anymore for the council. They can just assess the full amount payable immediately, those sort of things. So we avoid, obviously, we avoid that at all costs. I mean, we, we just want to work it out and, and, and get an agreement in place. We have options if, if we, if, if we have to, but it's not something we ever actually want to pursue to any, any real length.
Okay. Yeah. It's nice for everybody to hear how, how it works.
Yeah.
Hey, Aaron, a quick question for you when I was listening to you there. If for some reason, say, two people didn't want to do this and didn't go along with it and stuff, and we did the whole package, and, and all, and all the amounts were figured in there for the hookups and all this kind of stuff, and we had to do the bond, uh, then there probably wouldn't be an option to finance this thing if it got held up. Would there, how would we do that then?
Well, I mean, we, we'd still finance it the same way by adding it to the east side one bond. It would just be that we wouldn't be getting revenue for a delayed period of time from some of the parcels. Um, we would have to make up that cost from those parcels until they connected and those assessments went into play. And then we get ourselves paid back from that.
Okay.
So we would have a little upfront cost to cover. Let's say if two parcels, say they're not signing. And it takes us, you know, a, a year from the date the utilities are in, then we commence action. That would mean that probably wouldn't be able to assess them for two years, you know, the, the year out, and then another year, because once we get through the enforcement action, it'll probably take six months. And then from there, you know, we wouldn't get the assessments to the following year any, anyways. So for those two years, we'd have to pay that portion, um, of the bond cost. But then when they did finally are forced to hook up, and we get the assessments, we just get ourselves paid back. And so that money would go right back into water sewer funds, wherever we take it from, to, to pay us back. So it wouldn't affect the debt or anything like that with it.
Okay.
We just would have to upfront some of it.
Roughly speaking, this afternoon, we were like at fifteen thousand, and we estimated the hookups and everything at five to seven.
Well, and that's hard to say. I mean, if you only have a twenty, you know, twenty foot line you have to run, obviously, your hookup's not gonna cost very much.
Well, in his case, I was.
Whatever foot line, it's gonna cost a lot more.
Right.
Like he said, seven thousand, he's, what he got quoted today.
Yeah. So, you know, what we, what you have to assume is, is that if, 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 just the basic assessment cost. So if you're talking fifteen thousand over fifteen years, it's obviously a thousand dollars a year, five percent increase, a thousand fifty a year, which is about eighty-eight dollars a month. Now, if you have to add on the cost to, um, uh, you know, connect, if you want to add your, your cost to connect from your house to the main, that would up that amount, um, you know, to something else. It depends on how much your cost is. But we figured worst case scenario, it would be, you'd be looking at maybe twenty, well, no, fifteen, like twenty, twenty-two thousand, high end, maybe? Fifteen thousand, and then another seven for, uh, that connection from the, from the stub to your house. So we'd think maybe the highest assessment would be about twenty-two thousand. And that would still, that'd be a little, maybe about a hundred dollars a month, a little over, um, that would be added. You know, again, we know these are still big numbers. Um, but, you know, honestly, I don't know how to do it differently, you know, as far as getting this cost down.
Well, I was just thinking if, and I don't think anybody's gonna go for that, but if we should have a cap of twenty-two for the overall project for maximum amount it could be.
That, that wasn't, uh, what we discussed this afternoon.
No. No, I just thought I'd stir things up tonight here.
You know, to be honest, I think if we had a property owner that had a real big issue, we would, as far as, once we get into it and see where their lines are, and we have to connect stuff, I think we could probably work with that property owner, try to figure something out.
Because under the current.
We don't want to add ten thousand to their cost.
Right.
On their lines, that's for sure.
Under the current plan, you know, basically that U shape that we're talking about, Tim's the one at the, uh, Tim and Laurie are the ones that the, would have the worst cost involved with getting water from the street over to the house. And of course, when you guys have the open house, you can discuss the various plans and see if that's more cost effective, or, you know, everyone else, it should not be as difficult, uh, a process.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the council? I think if not, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, ask the council to make a motion, uh, to approve moving ahead with the proposed, uh, fifteen thousand dollar fee as, uh, discussed at Public Works today, um, and, uh, to move forward with the project at, at that cost, uh, per homeowner.
And I'll second that.
Have a motion by Merle, a second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Okay. So then what I'll do for next steps is, is, um, I'll send a new assessment agreement out to everyone. I apologize. When I sent that out, literally the next day, everything changed completely, and we got a little, it was better to talk to you about it than try to explain it in writing. I'll send out a new assessment agreement, um, out to everybody for your review. You know, talk to attorney, talk to me about it. I can help you and try to explain the basics of it. Um, and then we'll talk to bond council about amending, amending the bond. Greg, we'll need to get going as far as, um, getting bid documents put together, because it's above the bid threshold, so we'll have to bid it. Our assumption hench is they're gonna get it. And let's hope he comes in at a real fair price, and, and we get a good bid on it. But I also guess we might get some other bidders too. I mean, we got ten last project, what the heck, hopefully we'll get five this one, who knows? So we'll get the bid process going, so that'll have to come back at a future meeting to approve the bids. But the bigger thing for us right now is the financing part, so we have, we'll have time to get it added to the, the debt service for the east side. So once the financing's kind of in place, the rest we can just play out. Now, if the bids come in really high, the council's gonna have to discuss again, do we still want to do this?
Right.
If instead of a three hundred and forty thousand dollar project, we're talking a five hundred thousand dollar project, we'll have to have that conversation again. Um, so we would not finalize any assessment agreements or, or anything until we get the actual bids back, and we know that the project's feasible. If they come in high, we're gonna have to start all over again and try to figure out what to do. Uh, but this keeps it moving, and, and like I said, we're not committed to anything yet. Um, nothing's guaran-, you know, nothing's guaranteed that we're gonna do it yet, um, until we get the numbers back and the council gives the okay for actual construction.
So, I mean, just because we, we voted on trying to at least set it, get it to a, a reasonable amount tonight, doesn't mean that we're, the project's gonna go forward yet anyway. So we've gotta get the bids and everything else to see what, what it comes in at, and see if it, uh, and see, and see how it plays out. Okay, that brings us to, uh, item nine, reports. Uh, Mr. Maroney.
I think I'll take a video.
Mr. Anderson?
Just a quick update. Uh, the pedestrian bridge railing went on this week, and the lead-in rail from the ground to the bridge, if you will, those footings were poured today, and that should be put in this week. And once Blacktop's available, the patches on each end will be done, and that'll be all back together.
Yep. I, I kinda saw it when I was driving by today. It looks, uh, pretty good from, uh, from the road, so, uh, hopefully we'll get it done, and we don't have to worry about it washing out. Brenda? Chief?
Just building off of what Greg talked about, the, uh, you know, damage from the flood. Uh, most of our major projects are done. We still have some minor projects. There is rip wrapping that needs to be done, but we're gonna have to wait, unfortunately, for the river to go down. Uh, once that's finished, uh, we should be able to wrap up all of our, uh, paperwork with FEMA and get that, uh, that in and get the checks. Uh, so it'll be good to get these, uh, these projects done. Uh, you may have noticed, uh, the snow melted. The weather's warming, certainly isn't here. And, uh, windows are opening, not in here. But, uh, for the residents, every spring we deal with, uh, loud exhaust. We get from trucks, cars, motorcycles, whatever, uh, music getting turned up again because people are anxious to, to be outside. When those things are happening, please call and report them at the time. It makes it much easier for the police department to go out and talk with the, uh, the person who's got the loud truck or, uh, loud music, get them to turn it down, be respectful for the rest of the, the summertime season, um, while it's happening than after the fact. Uh, so it just makes our job a lot easier. Uh, it's never a bother to call us. Uh, you can call our main number, two-six-three-two-two-seven-eight, uh, the sheriff's dispatch number, or even nine-one-one. It all is gonna end up at the same place and with the same result, an officer coming out to deal with whatever's happening. Uh, that's, uh, all I have. Oh. Hard to believe, but, uh, a little less than a month, we will be doing the bike grand prix. Uh, we'll be on the east side of the city this year because of the.
The west side.
West. West side of the city because of the east side project. Um, so we're in the process of finalizing, uh, the security and, and details for that. Um, I hope to have more for the council and the public at our June fourth meeting, which unfortunately would just be a couple of weeks before the, the bike race, but we're still finalizing all the details.
Okay.
That's all I have.
County board met today, um, and they discussed the, um, Mr. Griffin's proposed, um, rural subdivision, the Little Cannon Woodlands. Um, real brief discussion really, and the county did vote to deny it, um, which was also always recommended by the county planning board as well. So, so as of right now, um, there's nothing moving forward with it. Um, we haven't, at least today, yet been contacted by Mr. Griffin about future plans, uh, to, to see if he wants to try to move forward with annexation and try to do the project that way. Uh, so as of right now, there will be nothing happening out there with that development. Um, one other thing I have is just, um, in case any council members didn't know, um, at the Minnesota Police, Chief of Police Association Annual Meeting, two weeks ago, uh, Jeff was named the president of the association, uh, which, um, is, you know, for all these different associations, whether it's the Clerk Finance Officer Association, the Minnesota City County Ministers Association, uh, being the president's a, kind of a big deal. So, um, I just want to congratulate Jeff on being named president. It's a, I think it's a great honor, and it's a, I think it's really good for the city of Cannon Falls to, to have one of our department heads, uh, the president of a state association. So congratulations, Jeff.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And that's all I have.
And you stole my thunder.
Sorry. Should've discussed that first.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Um, uh, today in, uh, Public Works, uh, Aaron actually gave us, uh, some good news. As many of you know, um, at, uh, John Birch Park and in the city parking lot across nineteen, we've been trying to get a crossing there, uh, for the longest time. And now it's looking a little more hopeful. It won't be right on the corner of the ban shell, but a little bit farther to the east. And, uh, so, uh, that was a, a nice bit of news once we get all the paperwork filled out. And, and hopefully it'll be part of the project, which will be going on later this year when they re- redo nineteen from downtown to Northfield, so.
Wow, guys. Way to keep pushing on that. Thank you.
It pays to, uh, complain long and hard evidently, so. That's all I have.
Leroy?
So Jeff, does this change anything? We have to salute you now or something when we first greet you, or is everything okay the way it is?
I'll accept salutes.
Okay. Congratulations. Very nice.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Morris?
And I don't have anything. Just, uh, remind everybody that, yeah, it is getting hot out there. Uh, four-wheelers are, uh, coming out. Uh, so make sure that, uh, you obey speed limits and obey the laws on those things. Uh, again, if, uh, you got a problem with that, now make sure you call the, the police department, uh, so that they can get in and, uh, uh, and, and handle it. And, uh, I know.